Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Welcome everybody. Today is Tuesday, March 14th. It's about 7:30 PM. Tonight is a planning and zoning commission public hearing and general meeting. We are here in room 206 of Town Hall. And we have a quorum. We're missing Jeff. And that's Jeff, right?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Okay. So it's a public hearing. We'll get right into it. The first I would read it into the record. It's going to be continued, but we're going to open it anyway. Actually, it was already open. Continuation of public hearing regarding landfilling and regrading. Landfilling excavation and regrading application number 543. Michael.
Michelle.
Michel. At 142 Near Water Lane. Proposal to excavate and regrade the northeast portion of the property to create an 11-yard and perform related site development activities. This 0.343 plus minus acre subject property is located on the east side of Near Water Lane approximately 340 feet south intersection with Jacobson Road. It's shown on the Sessors map number 57 as lot 24 in the RO1 zone. This is to be immediately continued. What are we talking about, guys?
Yeah, we're looking at, we're going to say April 4th for the continuation of this.
Okay. Now, so anyone that's here coming for that, it's April 4th. So we're going to continue that for the general public. Just for the record, right now.
Two or a half.
Two or a half. Yeah. Track down Jeff for a form.
Yep, we're going to track them down. It may be the 4th. It would be the next meeting after that would be the evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Continuing on, the next member on the agenda is business site plan number 94B as a void. Mainfilling and regrading application number 547. Barry Realti, LLP. 118 Old Kings Highway South and 1302 Boston Post Road. Proposal on both properties to expand the parking lot for existing veterinary offices, including regrading of the property, installation of stormwater management, and perform related site zone activities. The 0.386 plus or minus 118 Old Kings Highway South property is located on the west side of Old Kings Highway South approximately 485 feet north of the intersection with Queens Lane. And it's shown on the Sessors map number 63 as lot 27, 28, 29 in the service SB zone, service business SB zone. There's 0.44 plus minus acre property at 1302 Boston Post Road. Property is shown on the Sessors map number 63 as lot 2, also in the SB zone directly west of the 118 Old Kings Highway South property. These are the property that's on the post road. It's existing Darian Veterinary Clinic, which has got a different name to like VCA or something like that. And then it's a property on the backside, which is a single-family residential house, which I guess is only the same people. Just for record, my dog goes to their veterinary clinic. I've never been inside the building because they went there COVID. But I think I can properly rule on this application without any conflict.
Dog survives.
The dog survives.
Yeah, I think so.
Yes.
The end of health.
Not a coffee self, he's living with me. What do we got, guys?
Sure. As you mentioned, there's an existing single-family residence which has taken access to Old Kings Highway for many, many years. And the proposal is to demolish that house. And there's a little shed in the backyard to eliminate that driveway so there's no longer access, vehicular access from Old Kings Highway. Regrade the property a little bit and add some parking for the vet's office. If you ever turn the path there, you'll see there can be a little congested at times between people who work there and people sitting in their cars waiting for the vets to come out, bringing their animals in. So it's really a big benefit to the vet's office to expand this parking behind the building, add some parking spaces, put in some new drainage, as I mentioned, some grading, some new landscaping, and should be a big benefit to the business there. And also, as I said, will eliminate one curb cut on Old Kings Highway. Joe Canis reviewed the drainage and stormwater erosion controls. His comments were submitted for the record dated March 1st. Those are in your packet. Tonight, Harry Rochville from the Court Engineering is here with members of his team to explain the proposal, get feedback on you. It's likely this might have to be continued for a week or two or three just to fine tune some things, but we wanted to get some things on the table, get feedback from the commission, have Harry explain it tonight and take it from there.
Okay. And then just to confirm, I know they noticed on the date, was everybody?
They did. We have, Harry submitted proof of mailing, so that's okay. My recollection of this, Harry can stop me if I'm wrong. As part of this application, the vet's office is a special permit use. There's no changes to the way they're operating, their business, what they're doing, hours or anything. It's solely the changes to the site plan by adding the parkage and a regrading application beach. Because you can see that property on Old Kings Highway is very steep. It goes from elevation 50 down to 25. And you can see, that's why the driveway swings around. If you've never seen it, on a day like today, it would be treacherous at best.
And there's no drainage at the property now at the veterinary clinic?
There is drainage at the vet clinic, but there's no drainage on the residential property. So this should help flatten things, plantings, and a more formal drainage system.
Fantastic. Mr. Rochfeld, welcome. Take it away, sir.
Thank you. Nice to see you all in person. Harry Rochville with the Court Engineering, professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, representing the applicants. As Jeremy had mentioned, there is two parcels in this application. 118 Old Kings Highway South, 1302 Boston Post Road. The 1302 Boston Post Road parcel is currently developed with the animal hospital. Old Kings Highway parcel is currently developed with a single-family residence. Both are within the SB zone. 118 Old Kings Highway does border the residential zone to the east and to the north. Both of these properties, well, Old Kings Highway is a residential zone, and this property here is also a residential zone. Shake Shack over here to the south and another animal sort of store right here to the south of the animal hospital. Currently, there's 18 parking spaces on site for the animal clinic. As Jeremy had mentioned, it's usually overflowed, not enough room. So the proposal that we're helping out the client with is to add as much parking as is feasible on the lot that they also own. All parking will be within 500 feet of the building. It will be served per zoning regulations. We will be adding 21 parking spaces, so there'll be a total of 39 now. And we're also, there's one handicap space on site now. We'll be adding another. Since we're adding so many spaces, it'll be over 25 spaces, which will need two ADA spaces as opposed to the one that's there. Most of the proposed work is on the Old Kings Highway site because that's where the overflow parking is going. You'll see that it is very steep heading up to Old Kings Highway. Residents, of course, will be demolished. The shed will be demolished, and the driveway will all be removed, topsoil and seeded. And the idea is, and I'll flip to the proposed plan shortly, is to use this sort of flat area with, that's moderately sloped here for the parking expansion, and to add drainage infrastructure to control that increase in runoff where there is no drainage infrastructure there now. The animal hospital does have drainage infrastructure. There's a catch basin here in the corner of the parking lot, which receives runoff from the parking lot, as well as roof leaders from the animal hospital. That's directly connected to Boston Post Road drainage system. So here is our proposed plan. As I had mentioned, you know, the whole idea is to add additional parking. So we'll be directly expanding the existing parking lot here and sort of meandering around where we're taking advantage of that flattish, long area of the property here, add that additional parking. As I had mentioned, there'll be an additional 21 parking spaces. We will be holding a slope between 3% to 5% for the parking area, which is the max we like to go in parking so that the doors don't swing open too hard when you're on that slope. And then from there, we'll be providing about a 10-foot area behind the parking that will include a curtain drain to receive runoff from the steep slopes. So that'll all be captured and not overflowed on to the parking area. And that'll be rerouted around and connected directly into the Boston Post Road drainage system. We have catch basins scattered throughout the new parking area that'll capture the entire new parking surface. That'll be routed to a hydrodynamic separator for water quality, which will then be discharged into a solid pipe system for detention to control peak flows from the proposed improvements. We did soil testing on the property. I know that was one of Ty and Bond's comments. They must have just missed that. But the soil testing data was shown here. We did three holes throughout this lower area, which would have been the only place that we could have put drainage on the property. And there was high groundwater in all of the holes. So that is the reason for the solid pipe system. So we're not taking credit for any infiltration on this property, which is why we have that hydrodynamic separator for water quality. So instead of infiltration to treat the water, we will be using the separator. And then, as I mentioned, the solid pipe system, and that will be relieved through a control structure that'll have low-flow orifices and overflow wears to throttle down the peak rate of runoff from all storm events up from 2 to a 50-year storm. That'll directly connect into the catch basin on our property, which will still hold its same connection to Boston Post Road. And the drainage report we provided does show that peak flows have been reduced from the proposed development to that catch basin. And that also doesn't take account for any of the impervious surfaces on 118 Old Kings Highway South. Per Darian Drainage Manual, we treated all those surfaces undeveloped meadow, so that entire driveway, existing house shed, that wasn't accounted for. All treated as meadow. And I think that covers the drainage. I mean, we'll have erosion controls all the way around the new development to protect the abutting neighbors. There's an existing stone wall on this side of the property that is decrepit, falling apart. So we'll just match the grays on the Shake Shack property.
Are you sure that's Shake Shack right next door? I think there's a house in between.
Shake Shack is right next door here.
I think Shake Shack wrapped around behind the dog food store. No, you're right. Okay. The dog food store's there.
Yeah, the other parking comes pretty much right up to ours.
Yep.
And then, so for our grading, you know, as we mentioned, there's very, very steep slopes up here. We don't want to disturb those. Those will all be maintained. The trees there will be maintained for screening. We will just be, we will be grading up to the existing driveway. Since that'll be removed and already disturbed, we don't want to grade any further than that and cause any disturbance on the steeper slopes up to Old Kings Highway. And that'll also allow us to maintain that existing tree screening up there. Now, as Jeremy mentioned, we'll close off access to Old Kings Highway. We'll extend the curb there, so permanently no access, and everything will be accessed in the animal hospital through the extension here. Another comment from Ty and Bond was just to include inspection ports on our detention system. That's no problem. We will revise our plans to do that, along with a few other revisions we will be making after we've reviewed this plan with Jeremy and Fred internally. And I just want to switch to a working plan, if that's okay. You don't have this, but it'll explain what's coming. And I think after that, we could go over any questions you may have.
Okay.
So one of Jeremy's main concerns was the residential line for Old Kings Highway. It was pretty tough to tell where it was on the GIS. And Jeremy helped us out a lot by finding a old zoning map, I think from the 70s, 75 or 77. And that actually had a dimension from the property line to the residential zone line that was 25 feet. So we've added that to our plan here to show that residential zone line. And then per zoning regulations, we're not allowed any parking within 25 feet of that residential zone line. So we did have to make some minor modifications to our parking alignment to keep all of our proposed spaces off of, outside of that 25-foot setback from the residential line, which is what you're seeing here. It's generally the same, just things were shifted ever so slightly. There was only two spaces that were within the residential zone by a couple of feet. All the drainage will remain the same. The impervious surface is equivalent, and the system will work as intended on the previous approval. So Ty and Bond's, you know, recommendations and review are still valid. Another concern was the lighting and screening on this property. The animal hospital is only open until 6 o'clock, but after meeting with Jeremy, we did think it would be a good idea to add a couple lights. So we've commissioned Kate Throckmorton with Environmental Land Solutions, should be providing a lighting plan as well as a screening plan for the residential properties, primarily the property here to the north. We're going to, we've done our new grading here to sort of create a shelf here, about an eight-foot shelf where she can plant some evergreens along the property line. And then there's also another natural terrace up here. She can add a few more plants as well as, where the opening will be closed from Old Kings Highway. So you'll be getting that plan in the coming weeks. That'll show the lighting and the screening. We also added privacy fence to Shake Shack and the animal store neighbors here. There's already a pretty significant hedge between the animal store and the existing parking, so that'll remain as is.
And there'll be no connection between the Shake Shack parking when that's overflowed for them to be, kind of be able to cut through and steal some of these spaces, so to speak?
Correct.
That will not be?
Nope, they will not be connected at all. They should be, they're about five, actually probably more now, about 10 feet apart, grass buffer between them. And the fence will be there, too.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
And I think that covers all of the modifications we're planning to submit. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Thank you, Harry. The other thing I think you might have said was that it reduces peak flows to the, I want to say to the catch basin that's on the Boston Post Road. But aren't you taking some of the water from the 118 piece and sending it to the same Boston Post Road?
Yes, so we analyze the drainage as a whole. So both properties were in the same drainage analysis. But you're right. I mean, we're capturing essentially all of 118 Old Kings Highway, which all slopes that way anyway. It all gets to Boston Post Road. But we're essentially capturing this whole hillside via the curtain drain and rerouting it around, and then all of the new driveway, which is essentially the entire Old Kings Highway property.
So it goes, the curtain drain goes into the chambers in the middle, and then it goes to the street?
We're actually bypassing the chambers with the curtain drain since that water's all, it's already being filtered through vegetation. And it would just, it would increase the size of the detention system to a point where it's, you know, it's not feasible and we can still accomplish our decrease in peak flows by bypassing that runoff from the hillside.
Okay. And the sewer, the sewer commission doesn't matter that we're taking another property, sticking in that same sewer head?
We can double-check on that question?
That's all. Because you're, now you're taking 118 and you're sending, you're taking all the water from 118 and send it to that same basic manhole, right? Curtain drain goes direct to the manhole in that corner, and then the chambers eventually dissipate into that same spot, right?
Right, right. Right. But I think it's important that it all goes there now, too. 118 Old Kings Highway included.
It does go there naturally?
Yes, yeah. It overflows over the parking lot and all gets down there.
Okay.
The existing parking lot.
You're removing a house.
Yep.
Which doesn't look like it's been occupied in a while, but still.
Right. Doesn't improve your service. Adam, want to go first? Any questions?
No, no questions. Let's go straight forward.
Mike?
Maybe this is a question for Jeremy. Are the lots going to merge?
The lots will merge. They'll have to merge them because that, you get into the whole setback issues for parking and things like that. So the lots will be merged, but they didn't want to do it just yet until they get their approval. You're correct.
They'll be more conforming if they merge, right?
They will be more conforming because I think they're short on parking now, could be. But, I mean, from a practical standpoint, you can see it's very crowded there. By adding this and merging the lots, I can make a lot of improvements.
And my client has agreed to merge the lots, just, you know, granted, we get the approvals to do so.
Right, because right now you have three lots on Old Kings Highway, and I think one lot on Boston Post Road.
George, anything?
I just need to understand the curtain drain a little more, if you would. Pardon my ignorance, but I don't understand it. Is it just a geographical or topographical effect, or is there a pipe in there to accept water, or how does that work?
Yeah, sort of both. So there'd be a slight swale there behind the curb and between the slope that will have a gravel surface and a pipe below it, so.
Oh, okay.
Sort of everything that you mentioned, and it will route that runoff all the way around.
Okay. And then it goes, oh, I see, to the pipe near the place for stockpile, the stockpiling?
Yeah, so it ties directly into our outlet control manhole.
Okay.
So it doesn't enter the detention system, as I mentioned, but it will, it'll enter our infrastructure bypassing the detention, and it will go right along with everything else to the existing catch basin.
Okay. And you're not changing the grade from 35 down to whatever, the 30 feet or whatever? That, you're not doing any construction or any landscaping?
Over here?
Yeah.
Right. That's right.
There are some trees there? I guess there's not much, but there's a stone wall in there for part of it. I just am wondering how much water is going to be flowing down there. And I guess at least it won't be more than currently, right?
That's right. And I would say 95% of it will flow onto our parking lot or into the curtain drain. So it'll be a great reduction from what's actually going down to that corner now.
Okay. Do you rely on the curb to direct some of the water back to the curtain drain?
I wouldn't say that. It'd be more of the grading that you mentioned, where we'll be grading away from the curb where the grass will be flushed there, you know, a very slight swale. But, you know, the gravel at the surface will capture that runoff, you know, most of the time where it won't be allowed to overflow onto the parking.
Understood. Thank you. Amy?
The only question I have is if there's something that's critical as far as a maintenance plan, you know, with regard to the drainage system. Love to see that be part of the record going forward.
Yep, we include a maintenance plan in our appendix C of our drainage report. So that, the last page.
Because Canis didn't mention that either. He mentioned that somewhere. Star Facilities Maintenance Plan.
Page 101. It's probably going to vary.
Last, last page. Very last, very last page. That's the first page, to the back of the book.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we file this on the land records, too?
No, what we would do is file a notice in the land records, which would refer to this document.
Great. Perfect. Thank you.
Can you just clarify on the maintenance, sorry, two questions, Stephen.
Go right ahead.
Maintenance plan applies to the new stuff, but also the existing piping, right? Because we're tying into a lot of existing structure that's there, so just want to make sure that it's anticipated that that maintenance plan applies to both the existing and the new structures.
Yeah, I think we worded it for, for the proposed components, but we could, I could change the language in there to refer to all components. I mean, I think it's just that one catch basin that'll need to be cleaned as well. So that's no problem.
And then, just out of curiosity, the upper right-hand corner of the map, there's a manhole that says it's unsafe to open?
Well?
What's that about?
I don't know. I see.
Upper right, right? All the way to the top, right there?
Oh, here?
Yeah.
I think it's probably because it was in the street. That's a note directly from the survey. I want to assume because it was right on the shoulder of Boston Post Road that they didn't open it, or it was sort of tarred over that they couldn't open it. But I can't speak to that. That was directly verbatim from the survey.
Maybe we could just figure that out, because if that's, you do have a component of the maintenance plan where the manholes have to be maintained?
Well, that's off-site, so we wouldn't be maintaining that.
You wouldn't maintain that?
Yeah, that's a city manhole.
Unsafe to open, seems.
Maybe it's because you got clipped by a car driver down the road.
That's all. That's all.
Thank you.
And then just to explain, the 118 lot is cut north and south from residential to commercial?
Right. The area right along Old Kings Highway is residential. It doesn't, we look closely at the zoning map. In our belief, that zone line does not run along the middle of the road or even the edge of road. It's about, I think, what'd we say, about 25 feet?
There's a 25-foot dimension on that zoning map.
Off. So in this case, the proposal will comply because the commercial part of the lot will be used for commercial purposes, and the residential property, part of the property will be used.
So you're saying like this 25-foot strip is residential?
That's correct.
And then there's a setback from the residential till you get to the parking lot?
Correct.
And that's why you got to move this stuff around?
Right, and those are the two highway lines I have here. This is the residential zone. This is the 25-foot setback. You don't have that planned.
Yeah, we're telling this one. All right. Anything, would anybody in the public like to speak to this application? Okay.
Do we want to fix that line so that it's on the street and this whole property is in the commercial zone?
We did discuss that at length with Harry. We talked about the pros and cons of changing that zone line. And I think it was decided by Harry that, you know, maybe that's something for the future, but at this point, he didn't want to make the application more confusing nor stir issues with neighbors saying, oh, now it's entirely commercial. You can have a commercial curb cut in there. And we don't want commercial curb cuts off Old Kings Highway.
Yeah.
So I think Harry said, you know what, for the time being, let's keep it simple. We'll get our project, and then that way, if in the future the town wants to change it, we'd be conforming, and we wouldn't have to worry about it.
But we do have now at least an updated map with a line on it. So in 15 years from now, somebody's not saying, we are looking at a map from 1975. We're looking at one from '03, '23.
But we did spend some time examining just that issue, the pros and cons of shifting the line. And if it's shifted here, what about the other properties? And he said, you know what, let's keep it uneventful, hopefully.
Hopefully, yeah.
Because the guy to the left, which is Edward and Linda Corin, that whole thing is residential, right?
I believe that's entirely residential property.
Okay. And then, you see that the dog food store is commercial?
Yep.
And Shake Shack goes back all the way is commercial?
I believe so.
Okay. And then I think they keep going down the road, back and forth. You get another gas station and eventually H and L. Okay. We checked the public. You guys good?
Yep. So the only question is, what day will we continue this to? It's going to give Harry a little time to get that final survey and showing the zone line, get the planting and landscaping plan, and get that submitted to the commission, and you review that.
I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be April 4th plus maybe a week, so it might be on the 11th.
Well, we're not scheduled to meet the 11th because that's school vacation week. Unless the commission wants to meet that week.
I thought you weren't scheduled to meet the 4th, but then I saw it here, the 4th is on there. I mean, Mike and I are here on the 4th, though.
Will those be done by the 4th?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I wasn't sure. Okay. Whenever, next November.
Yeah, we haven't seen the final details of landscaping or the lighting.
If we could see it and deliberate on it the same night.
The lighting would be important with the residence.
The lighting does matter. That's a good catch.
Yeah, that was one of my questions.
Yeah, I think currently they only have one light that's fixed to the building, which covers their existing parking, so.
With the people that are on Old Kings Highway, I mean, I'm going to say the south, yeah, the south side of Old Kings Highway, those people are going to care.
Yeah.
Because now they can see more.
Yeah, the parking lot will be at elevation 27. And you can tell that Old Kings Highway South is somewhere between 43 and 53. So it's at least 15 to 25 feet higher, but the people across the street will look down. And while there may be some more plantings added, it will be, they'll have a better view of.
Right.
Over the, onto the post road.
One last thing I meant, that's it.
Yeah, the parking lot will be at elevation twenty-seven, and you can tell that Old Kings Highway South is somewhere between forty-three and fifty-three. So it's at least fifteen to twenty-five feet higher, but the people across the street will look down. And while there may be some more plantings added, it will be, they'll have a better view of
Right.
over, over the, onto the post road.
One last thing I meant, that's it. Did, do you know if the applicant or the, the veterinary clinic has any attention of walking dogs back in that area? Cause in, in here, it does, it, it doesn't say any dog walking section. I mean, a lot of these vet clinics have places where you can walk the dogs.
Um, it didn't come up, but I can certainly ask before the next meeting.
If you don't mind.
Okay.
Okay, all right, with that said, um, we're gonna postpone this till the fourth.
Continue it to April fourth.
And the portion where the dogs are kept outside on the right side, that's not anticipated to change? Like, it's gonna, not gonna get closer to a neighbor in the rear area?
Right, none of the use of the building.
None of the use has changed.
But dogs do stay there overnight now.
Yeah, and there, the side to the very right is where the, this little outdoor area over there.
They're labeled here.
Where they're out there in the, in theory barking and noise. You know, it's not getting closer to a neighbor
Right.
on the other side.
April fourth.
April fourth. On the eleventh?
I'm not going anywhere.
All right, next item up for bid. Next on the agenda, coastal site plan review number three seventy A, flood damage prevention application number four thirty-two A, landfilling and regrading application number five thirty-two A, Christopher and Lisa Hughes at twenty-five Harbor Road. Proposal to raise the existing residence to the foundation and construct a new, construct a new single-family dwelling with additions atop the existing foundation. Construction of elevated patio and hardscape areas at the rear of the residence, installation of a plunge pool, including the construction of a series of terrace retaining walls, expanded driveway area, and to perform related site foam activities within regulated areas, including the regrading of the property and installation of stormwater management. The one plus minus acre subject property is located on the east side of Harbor Road, approximately six hundred feet south of the intersection with the Rings End Road. As shown on the Sessors map number fifty-one, that's lot nine, the R one zone. So this, this is a house that's right before you go over Rings End Bridge.
No, it's all the way the end of the street, on the cul-de-sac.
Right, it's, yeah, Harbor Road, you make a right hand side, and then you have to go to the little bridge. Go ahead, Jerry, what else you got?
You can see the work is now under construction, the commission approved a replacement house last year, knocking it down to the foundation, basically constructing additions and alterations. But the plans have changed since then, you may recall that the backyard slopes down to, uh, the water. I think it's Good Lives River down there, or Darien River. And the, the original plans, I believe, showed three retaining walls, and they've changed the plans to have less walls. And they changed the planting plan in the backyard as well. So because there's been some change to the plans, uh, we re-referred the application out to the state of Connecticut, DEEP, and their comments came back dated February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, and I'll read it as follows, the applicant is proposing modifications to a previously approved review. These modifications include increasing the driveway, adding an additional row to the stormwater retention system, installing two terrace walls instead of three lower on the property, and a landscaping plan. And you have the DEEP's, uh, response checklist in your packet. And also, we referred it to Joe Candace of Ty and Bond, who reviewed it relative to drainage, stormwater grading. And his comments came back in a two-page letter dated March first. Harry Roachville is here to outline the changes. He did submit a February sixteenth letter, which we have, which go through each of the changes in depth from the original plans. And Harry's here with the rest of his team, they can walk you through not only the changes to the, the grading, the walls, but also the landscaping plan, which is, I think, the biggest difference in the plan.
With regards to Candace and his stuff from Ty and Bond, is he just pinch hitting for Darren Austin?
He is pinch hitting these days, yes.
Okay, okay. Harry, welcome, nice to see you again, hope you see you in a while.
Nice to see you again. For the record, again, Harry Roachville, McCourt Engineering, professional engineer, state of Connecticut. As Jerry mentioned, um, house is under construction, uh, this, this project was approved, uh, back on September sixth, twenty twenty-two for coastal site plan review, flood damage prevention and landfilling, excavation, or regrading. Um, since then, um, we brought a landscape architect on board, which, um, is proposing changes to the driveway, um, the rear yard, and as Jerry mentioned, most importantly, the, the planting plan. So I'll just, uh, sort of summarize these changes for you. Here, I'll briefly go over the approved plan, and then I'll shift over to the, to the new plan. Nothing has changed to the house, house is under construction as per the previous approval and being built as was, um, uh, previously approved, I guess. Then the, uh, excuse me, existing driveway was to remain the same. We were terracing walls in the backyard, since it is a very steep slope back there, to create a flat recreational space in the upper area with a, with a rear hardscape elevated just above that. Erosion controls, which are currently in place, uh, consists of a steel fence with hay bales right before it drops off steeply down to the Darien River. So, so those will remain exactly in place, so, uh, area of disturbance, limit of disturbance is not changing for this new approval. Previously, uh, proposed was a proposed sewer connection, uh, that has already been installed and it is hooked up to the city's low-pressure system. So now we'll shift over to the, uh, the newly proposed plan. You'll see the main changes are the rear hardscape and the new driveway here. The driveway essentially follows the, for, for the most part, follows the existing driveway, it is slightly realigned. The main changes are a, uh, a pull-off parking area here in the front yard for, for two spaces. And with that, we'll be replacing, there's an existing boulder wall, um, holding up the existing driveway, which isn't in the best shape. So we're replacing that with the new four-foot boulder wall, you know, terraced with a, about a two-foot landscape wall. These walls will allow us to, to not grade on the, on the property lines, we'll be maintaining existing grade on the north property line, um, so, so that will be maintained in its existing condition. One of the biggest changes here is previously we had three retaining walls in the rear yard. Now we only have two, which has allowed us to, to place this last wall fifteen feet away from that steep slope down to the river, whereas previously approved, it was only five feet. So much larger space there, um, to maintain that existing grade between the wall, or I guess the wall's disturbance and that steep slope. Um, also, the, the rear hardscape has remained about, uh, the same area, just slightly reconfigured. There was a plunge pool on the previous approval, there's a plunge pool again on, on this approval. Also, we've massaged the grades down over in this area, um, to four to one, before they were, they were two to one slope, so much more moderate slope down to, down to this existing level here where we have our, uh, proposed detention system. Due to the new driveway, uh, pull-off area and slight reconfiguration, we did have to add a row to the existing detention system. So now it's three rows as opposed to the previously approved two. But, uh, it is sufficiently a size to treat the water quality volume from, um, all proposed surfaces that are routed to it, not proposed, all impervious surfaces that are routed to it, since it is a coastal property that flows directly to the Darien River, um, as, as Ty and Bond, Joe Candace had reviewed. He did have, uh, Ty and Bond did have one comment that we have addressed, um, last week. He requested that we provide a deep test hole where the proposed detention system is located. I did perform that test hole last Wednesday and can confirm that there are suitable soil conditions where we are, um, where we are proposing a detention system. Also, another comment of note was, uh, pre-treatment for the driveway drains before they are discharged to the detention system, such as a deep sump in the driveway catch basin. On our, on our plans that were submitted, uh, there is a two-foot deep sump as well as a sediment hood. So, uh, our, our drains have all the bells and whistles, um, to trap sediment before it's, uh, transported to the detention system. Uh, we will provide that updated DCIA form, um, in, upon this approval, just so we know, uh, things won't, won't change. And we will also certainly provide that stormwater managing operations plan that he requests, uh, similar to the, the previous approval. Other comments that we received were from DEEP. They had recommended us to look at, uh, some LID improvements, such as a rain garden, uh, or permeable surfaces, where there are two recommendations. In our opinion, this site doesn't, isn't feasible for either of those solutions. Uh, there's just not enough space for a rain garden, and not to mention the steep slopes, it's just, uh, not a feasible application on this, on this property. Also, same thing with the permeable surfaces for the driveway and the hardscape. The driveway is being installed on top of another driveway, so there wouldn't be suitable soil conditions for a permeable paver driveway, and same thing with the hardscape, the hardscape is, um, being built atop of a slab, so again, there wouldn't be any soil conditions down there, um, and it would be placing quite a bit of fill, so. Not feasible application for this, and in our opinion, our, our detention system is, is more than sufficient to treat the water quality for, for this proposed development. And then, as Jerry mentioned, a big part of the package was a, a new planting plan proposed by Jennifer Anderson Design. Very extensive, um, and, and the main goal is to stabilize those steep slopes down to the river, not only next to the retaining, well, not only behind the retaining walls, but on the sides of them as well. And Jenny Anderson is here, if you have any questions for her on that planting plan.
Can we get a zoning box on this, or is that on the survey?
What's the percentage of the things improved, uncovered?
I guess to answer your question, that would be on the survey, um, we don't typically include those.
Right.
Did you upload the survey, or could, do you remember who did?
It was William Seymour's office, yeah.
It would be part of, it's definitely on the old application, I can't remember if it was on this one as well.
I can't remember either, it was definitely on the old one.
Would it have switched between the old and the new?
The existing conditions?
Yeah.
Or the proposed? Uh, well, if the house is the same.
Right.
Right?
Right, the house is the same, it is currently under construction, right?
So we can include that in the file, just put a copy of that survey into the file.
So, but they're, they're taking out impervious surface, right? They're, they're gonna take that one of this one? The wall's coming out, but the gallery's really big.
They're adding driveway too.
Yeah, I think it's pretty close to being a wash in terms of impervious surface.
Um, slightly more for the driveway, actually.
Cause I'm trying to figure, if you're, if you're gonna speak, you have to come up to the, to the microphone, but hold on one second.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Right, so Harry, why don't you just tell what the gentleman said?
Yep, no problem, so there's existing parking spots, pull-offs, all the way at the front of the driveway here, which we're not capturing, which is why it's not included in our water quality volume, that all goes out to the street.
So that's a good point.
That's being eliminated, there's also another one.
Is that the dashed line on the planting plan?
Exactly, that's right. Yep.
No, all the way at the very top, where the skater is to enter the driveway.
Pretty close, yeah.
That, little bit right there. I think this thing, they're cutting rid of that, and they're swapping it down, I mean, it's like thirty percent more, yeah.
Those are the Amazon guys.
Pull-off, yeah, now he's down at the house.
The reason why I asked the question is because I'm, I'm curious why DEEP wanted you guys to do a rain garden instead? And then your answer was because it's, it's, you know, it's, it's already too developed, and I don't really think that's the case. You got a big piece of, big piece of land. That's the reason why I asked the question, it's, it's sort of, it doesn't show up. If you have an acre, if you have an acre of land, you, it seems like there's a lot, there's a lot of hardscape, but do you remember how close the other one was?
In terms of?
Impervious surface or lot coverage and stuff?
Oh, lot coverage, I think they're probably between twelve and fifteen percent, would you say? I don't remember.
I don't have it in front of me, I'm not sure, but I think it was well under, yeah.
Max twenty.
Do we have the square footage for the house?
I do not.
Can we just get that somehow, rather?
Yep.
Um, so, I do have a, a small copy of the old, of the, uh, the survey from the last, and the building coverage was, um, eight point four out of a max twenty percent, so it'll still be well under that.
And there's no impervious surface coverage on that, is there?
No.
No, it's not required.
No.
Okay, um, and then it's, what, it's a five-bedroom house?
I believe so. Yeah, that's all attached to sewer.
Okay. All right, um, Amy, want to start on this side, you wanna go first, questions?
I'd love to hear the landscaping plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd love to just, it's just a quick overview.
The proposed plan with regards to, you, you made mention of intentional plantings to help retain.
Yeah, to talk, go to the microphone, introduce yourself for the record. If you don't mind, just your name for the record and your company.
Uh, Jennifer Anderson, uh, landscape designer, working on the Hughes project. Thanks, Harry.
And we have your landscaping plan.
Yeah, so there's, there's two sets, but really, the master plan is, is nothing that really will. We can talk about it, but it's more just foundation plantings, but where we're really focused was from that down to the water. Yep. And what we've done is we've added a lot of, uh, uh, salt tolerant, uh, erosion control plantings, there's a list. And we're gonna be doing sweeps of planting all along this area and along this area, and then here are the two walls, which we're also going to soften with some grasses. We have a lot, we have a, a list of sweeps of, um, of shrubs, twenty-five of this, you know, they're all, um, na- mostly natives, so it's gonna be really, really pretty, and we've got big sweeps of viburnum and bayberry, which does really well by the water. Some blueberries and roses, and then lots of, lots of grasses, lots of panicum, uh, some escanthus. And then in the center here, we are going to do a, um, seed mix. An erosion control seed mix that also lends itself a little bit to salt, too. Um, I have a copy of that. Well, no, I have a, well, yeah, the picture's ready, but, um, I do have a copy of the mix of what's gonna be going. This area, um, pretty much, you know, is undisturbed, even with the walls, and, and, uh, what we're gonna do is, is take that up and do an entire meadow.
I'm just curious, what, what necessitated or made you think that, you know, to change the configuration of the walls?
Um, well, first off, it's a huge expense to do the walls. A huge expense, plus, um, you know, they were taking, the, the last wall was so far down on the hill that I thought we could accomplish, and, and there is no wall there now, I mean, we've really, the, 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 there was a deck here and now it is patio, but we're really not trying to accomplish a lot of, you know, these guys aren't looking to create a lot of level land. So we were just sort of terracing for no real reason. So we did, we did keep the two walls, we extended them far off, so this is really the only area where there's gonna be, I mean, it's even gonna be sloped, you know, walkable. The area between these two walls is gonna be a little, little tough, too, but then from here down, it's just gonna be a pretty meadow. And what we're trying to accomplish is that, you know, there's a, there's a distinct view from the other side of the river to this house.
Yes, yeah, it looks like it's beautiful, beautiful configuration.
So we're, we're going to try to make that also important, that when you're on the other side, you know, of, uh, what just the name of the road up over there?
Pear Tree.
Pear Tree.
When you're on Pear Tree and you're looking back at this house, you're not just gonna see it, you know, eroded, you know, rocky. We're, we're hopeful to make it look really pretty all season round.
And Jennifer, when we met at the staff level, we talked about the importance that what you're putting forth is actually what you're going to plan to construct, it's not a conceptual plan.
No.
It's detailed and accurate, and is what's going to be.
Yes, Chris, we were, yes, yes, we've already given Chris the budget for this, and, uh, yeah, his face might get a little bit redder as we talk about it, but yes, we, the plans have been done, the lists have been made, and I think it's something that will probably happen in the fall.
I, I'm not introducing myself, but just, the intent here.
You have to cut to it, I'm sorry. Just state your name, I guess it sounds like a good property owner.
It's Chris Hughes, and I am the property owner. So the, the intent here is to make it blend as nicely and subtly into the landscape as it possibly can. A lot of indigenous species, have the whole thing feel very Connecticut, stone, grasses, natural grasses from both sides, right? So that when you're looking back from, from the other side of the river, that it blends into the, and that's good for us, and it's good for the neighborhood, so it's a, it's a, it's a win-win, but we, and yes, when we came here the first time, the house was really baked, but the landscaping wasn't as baked, and so we went back and really said, okay, how do we make all of this? Now that we're so happy with the house, how do we make the landscape really fit with the rest of the house? And so, the, the architect that we started to work with, the landscaping architect, was not available, we hired Jenny. It was, so the plan got revised some to, to capture that essence, or that spirit of, how do we make it fit appropriately into the, into the landscape?
We're also trying to go for a no-mow situation, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's just, it's grasses, it's got a lot of. Yeah, so it's just, it's grasses, it's got a lot of steepness to it, so make it feel very, very indigenous.
Cool.
Thank you.
And just for record, all of your number of plants and all that is on the plan. It says twenty-three of this and fifteen of that and five of those.
The goal is to do sweeps, or ribbons, ribbons of, and have a three-season mix. There are some evergreens in there, too, but with the bayberry, but mostly it will be from spring through the late fall.
This is way more extensive than when we were here the first time.
It always is. Most expensive language, sentence in the English language while we're at it.
Figured it in literally, it is a slippery slope.
Yes, it is.
It sounds like your landscape architect saved you a lot of money by not creating a third wall.
Sure.
That was it. He must have been at that meeting.
Wonderful.
Good, Amy?
Yeah, I'm good. Looks beautiful.
George? Uh, no, I'm fine. Mike, Adam, okay? Would anybody in the general public like to speak to this application?
I think it's a good application.
You're welcome. Amy, we're leaving open? We're good? Okay. Um, an intended motion to close. Adam makes the motion, looking for a second. Amy makes a second. Five, nine. Five, nine. Okay, great. We'll deliberate on this maybe on the fourth, or the, what's our next meeting?
Deliberate tonight.
Uh, we might even, yeah, we might deliberate on it tonight, right? Okay. Doesn't sound like they're in the super.
Yeah, we wouldn't decide it tonight. It would be decided at a future meeting, either March twenty-eighth or April fourth.
So we might deliberate tonight, decide. All right, next item up for bid. And just for, we went over, there's nothing in Joe Canis's letter, I just wanted to say that. Yep. All right, next item. Next item, coastal pipe site plan review number three sixty-seven A, flood stem prevention application number four twenty A, landfilling and regrading application number five twenty-six, John and Amanda Spatola at eleven Searls Road. Proposal to construct addition to the north, north coming west and east sides of the existing single family residence, construction of a new and realigned driveways and patio areas to form related site development activities within regulated areas, including regrading of the property, installation of stormwater management, and new septic system. Build one point eight-nine plus minus acre subject properties located on the south side of Searls Road at, at its northern intersection with Indian Trail, and it's shown in assessments map number sixty-six as lot sixty-nine and is in the, located in the R one zone.
I'll take this one. So this is another application that the commission saw last year in April of twenty-twenty-two. The commission at that time approved the project under section eight-ten coastal site plan review, section eight-twenty flood damage prevention, and section eight-fifty landfilling and regrading portions of, of the regulations. Since that time, there's been a new owner for the property. They've come back with an amended proposal, which cuts back the previous proposal quite significantly. The previous proposal had a pool and a very large addition to the back of the house. This time around, there's some more modest additions to the existing residence, some reconfiguration of the driveway areas, new stormwater management. The property is partially within the AE thirteen flood zone. The new development includes the portions of the driveway and the drainage system in the flood zone. The entire residence and additions are outside of the flood zone. We referred this application to Joe Canis of Ty &amp; Bond. He submitted comments on the application dated March first. The applicant's representative, Brian Nesterik of B&amp;B Engineers, sent a response letter dated March sixth to Mr. Canis's review. And we also referred the application out to Connecticut Deep. They submitted comments for the record dated March ninth. Those are included in your packets and as part of the record. We expected the applicant's representative, Brian Nesterik, to be here this evening to explain the proposal to the commission, to answer any questions you may have. He is not here this evening, so the commission will need to decide how to proceed with this. If you want to continue the hearing or?
Continue. Yeah. Continue. Yeah, I mean, I had a bunch of questions. I don't remember this one from the last time, but I mean, you said it's a more modest addition? Pretty big to me.
The other house, one other had represented the neighbor, it was just about the sound, the speakers going into their house, it was kind of on the border of it, yeah, yeah.
That's this one?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's huge, it was like a seven bedroom house.
Okay, so we'll continue this one, too.
What do you think, Fred? You want to do, uh, I think, fourth, eighteen?
There's the pool on the other side. We can, we can try for the twenty-eighth, and if, if we need to continue, the, the
problem with the twenty-eighth is it's going to be, it's, we have the Sedgwick property, Seven Sedgwick, on for the twenty-eighth, and we expect that to be a full night, so if there's some extra time that night, we can possibly address this as a continuation. If it doesn't pan out for the twenty-eighth, we could go ahead and continue it again to the fourth.
I'd punt that out even further, well, you're not noticing anybody else, I mean, even though neighbors even showed up.
Right, they did send notice to the neighbors. We have the proof of mailing in the file.
Right.
They did.
They did.
Particularly since there was neighbor problems with the last plan. The neighbors came out and were interested in the last go-around, so, so they, they've been noticed this go-around, too, for the change.
Why don't we do the April eighteenth instead?
Okay.
Okay.
Continue to April eighteenth, eight PM in this room, and that'll be the continuation.
Okay.
Is that still within thirty-five days?
Yeah, you get those timelines. We all took that, that class.
Well, hold on. Eighteen, seven, exactly thirty-five days. That should be okay.
Okay.
Continue to April eighteenth.
So then, then when the guy shows up on April eighteenth, we need an extension, if he has the grant.
If we need more time, I, I would imagine, in light of the fact that there's no one from the public here, it should be uneventful. But certainly if you have issues or questions, you want us to relay to Brian between now and then, we'd be glad to do it.
Okay.
That way he's prepared with whatever questions or issues you have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, April eighteen.
All right, April eighteenth, let's continue to April eighteenth. Great. That's the end of the public hearing, now moving to the general meeting. Deliberation possible, decisions on two items that were looked at on February twenty-eighth. Let's go with the first one. Coastal site plan review number three fifty-nine A, flood stem prevention application number four thirteen A, landfilling and regrading application number five eleven A, William and Elizabeth Jones at Two Contentment Island Road. Proposal to elevate and construct additions to the existing residence, remove the garage and construct a new detached garage, a new swimming pool, and terrace, relocate and expand the driveway areas, and perform related site development activities within regulated areas, including filling and regrading of the property and installation of stormwater management. Get one point oh-eight plus minus acre subject properties located on the northwest side of Contentment Island Road, approximately forty feet south of its intersection with Tokine Beach Drive, and it's shown on assessments map number sixty-seven as lot number sixty-five in the R one zone. If you don't mind, I'd like to hand this over to George, if you will accept. I did not watch this one on TV. I didn't watch the video, so I'm really not up to speed on the application.
All right, well, I'm sure folks recall that Attorney Tibbetts made the primary presentation here, and the biggest controversy seemed to be over the, the basins on Contentment Island Road, the catch basin, and they have already constructed a solid wall where the tennis court used to be. I believe the result of the comments made was they're going to continue to be flooding of Contentment Island Road at that spot despite the cat, new catch basin that has already been installed and which is already planning to flow to the water. I forget what water that is there. Is that Scotts Cove?
The gut.
Yeah, so that is kind of a known element, and the comment was made that that will be an issue for the Tokine Association, which owns the road. I don't know that we had in mind any specific conditions on that issue. I don't know that we could or would, but I did not have any particular objections other one, at all, really, to the plan, so I.
Who's up to make a comment, if any?
No, this was the one, two that they'd already done some work on and they'd come back before us because they illegally regraded the land and issued a stop permit, so I think what we covered in part D about the two weeks and the site monitor was, was there to address, that was kind of my primary concern, right? This is their second shot with the exact same contractor and the exact same people, so it's like they might try and cut corners again. Only once, shame on you. So I think D will cover it, so that's, I'm okay with the rest of it, and I didn't see any other major typos or, or issues with the application.
Good. The, the site monitor, I recall, I commented, would not need to be an independent individual.
Correct.
Could be somebody engaged or already employed by the contractor, I guess, but somebody who will report to the P&amp;Z office.
It says the applicant's engineer may be used as a site monitor.
Okay, well, it's broad enough, okay.
And we never, have we ever had a situation where the homeowner themselves wanted to be the site monitor and report on their project every two weeks and fill that role?
Well, I mean, by definition, the engineer is a certified guy licensed from the state.
No, we, they didn't request that, that the engineer be the site monitor, we just set, you had made the comment that, you know, we're not envisioning that they have to go out and hire yet another person that's not already associated with the project, just to have somebody that's, you know, an engineer, a construction, you know, the GM, somebody.
Right, we do want to have someone that's, that has professional experience, of course, with respect to grading, installation of stormwater management.
I mean, that's a criteria.
We don't want the owner sending a one-word email, all good. See you next week.
Correct. Okay, that works. Yeah, I mean, I think the engineer also overlooks the GC. Continue, I'm sorry.
It's all right, Mr. Nettor.
Make a motion to approve.
Nice. Second? All right, any further comments, questions, concerns, or approve? Yes, okay.
Just please. Okay. Next item on the agenda, flood stem prevention application number four three seven, landfilling and regrading application number five forty-five, Geddes and Julia Johnson at Two Canoe Trail, three, Jesus, Three Canoe Trail. Proposal to construct a new two-story addition to the east side of the existing residence and south side of a deep, of the detached garage to construct a new retaining wall and steps within, within associated regrading of the property and perform related site development activities within a regulated area. The one point oh plus minus acre subject properties located on the south side of Canoe Trail at the southwest corner, formed by its intersection with our headway, and it's shown on the assessments map number seventy as lot fifty-one in the R one zone. Again, we have a draft in our packet, I'd like to pass it on to the vice chairman.
Okay. What I recall best about this application was the accolades that the landscape plan received.
Yep. It was. It was quite beautiful.
We were very enthusiastic about that, but I did not have any other comments or concerns about this, so anyone?
Nope.
No, this is pretty straightforward.
All right, a motion to close, approve, approve, yes. Okay, Mr. Nettor, all in favor?
Forty-zero, one extension.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, George.
My pleasure.
Moving on down the road, deliberations only on public hearings closed this evening. We did not close at that clinic, and we did close the other two, right?
No, the only one, twenty-five Harbor Road.
Yeah, we only closed Harbor Road because we didn't close the third one.
Yep.
Because it didn't show up. Makes sense to me, I mean, I think that is, it's been a nice job.
Yep.
And it's an existing application, I think there's some minor things that they can, you know, figure out with staff.
I think the only thing is the maintenance plan they got to put in, but apart from that, do we want to have a bond for the planting? We sometimes do, sometimes we don't, and this one's a pretty extensive planting plan.
I just think it's suspicion that this guy's going to want the planting plans.
I think so, too, I'm just saying, you know, if we're being consistent, we usually do. Or if we do, we do it for.
Not usually.
Not usually, but.
We don't, we don't do it if it, if we require the plantings or a neighbor wants we do.
Then we'll do it.
Yeah, this is at his discretion.
His peril.
Yeah, his discretion.
Aesthetic desire.
But it's an essential part of the plan.
He's already put the budget.
George? All right, all good?
All good.
All right, will staff, will staff please draft a positive resolution for that? Okay, moving on down the road, and any other business for tonight? Oh, so other business? Our next upcoming meetings are March twenty-eighth, which is my sister's birthday, and I will be here. Oh, you will? The next meeting is April fourth, I will be out of town, and Mike will be out of town, it sounds like. And the twenty-eighth, anything special?
The big hearing that night, it's one hearing, will be the Seven Sedgwick public hearing, so we'll get the plans out to you next Thursday, the twenty-third. Definitely visit the site, it's a former Bank of America building, and we'll see how it goes. They did come to us two years ago, a year and a half ago?
They was in person, yeah. But did, did they get through the sewer commission?
Still working with the sewer commission.
Okay.
And we will put a copy of the ARB's letter in your packet.
A recent letter or an old letter?
Old letter.
And they're not going back to the ARB?
They are not going back to the ARB. We can double check with Attorney Maslin.
Is that a requirement of ours or no? But we've never really approved anything that doesn't have an ARB positive report.
That's correct. The last, without talking about this application, the last time I can recall, an applicant went to the ARB and received a negative report was Commerce Bank, which was proposed at kind of where the Shell gas station is on Nuroton Avenue. They were going to terminate it to a Commerce Bank.
Oh, yeah.
And Commerce Bank had a very specific design. It was brick with a big red lit-up giant C. And the ARB had a number of comments and gave it a negative report, and it did, the negative report came to planning and zoning, and my recollection at the time was, the chairman of P&amp;Z was Mr. Konzie, who said, why are we getting a negative report from ARB?
And then they rebuilt the building.
I think P&amp;Z denied the application.
Oh, really?
On those grounds, in part or entirely because of those grounds, and that was not appealed by the applicant.
Okay, so that's the March twenty-eighth, and then the April fourth is a bunch of different items.
We'll have two or three minor public hearings, including the continuations tonight for the Feds Office, maybe one in one forty-two near water, and maybe one other hearing on April fourth.
Fantastic.
We will have to confirm with, with Jeff Ball whether he can make the fourth or not. If he cannot make the fourth, we will not have a quorum, so.
And we won't meet that night.
I'll give Jeff a call, too. Okay.
Is this the same application for Seven Sedgwick that was on the roster last spring-ish?
Yes.
Same people, same everything?
Same team, same plan, exact same plans.
Is there something with the sewers with it, right? The pipe was too small or something?
They are, sewer commission is.
Looking through it.
Looking through it right now.
When will they meet next, just out of curiosity for time?
I think we're going to have to continue that hearing, the P&amp;Z hearing, because the sewer commission, I do not think is meeting between now and March twenty-eighth, but at least we'll be able to, kind of what we did today, hear from about traffic, parking, hear from the neighbors, get everything out on the table, they'll get your questions and comments. We'll continue the hearing into April.
If there is an issue with the sewer, how would they fix it and make the building smaller, potentially?
I don't know.
Yeah, I watched the, I watched that commission meeting on TV seventy-nine. There's some, they're, they're at a tipping point. I don't know, I'm hoping it's real.
So I'm just wondering, is it worth us hearing it if it's all the-
By statute, we have to hear it.
Oh, we have to, because they-
Right, unless we get an extension from the applicant, so we could certainly reach out to Attorney Maslin and say, look, sewer commission says, no, you're wasting a lot of time and money coming to the commission, right? So we'll, Fred will reach out to him, or I'll reach out to him, and somebody wants to do-
Especially without A R B, too.
Great, okay. It's Ed Ray, and we made the papers again, thank you for last week. All right, with that said, intended motion to adjourn. Adam makes the motion, with the first second. Amy makes the second, all in favor. Thank you, TV seventy-nine. The meeting is now adjourned.